Good evening and welcome to the July 20th meeting of the Morganton Planning and Zoning Commission. We'd like to welcome you here tonight. During the evening, we will address our agenda and there's also opportunities in our agenda for those that will be wishing to address items with the commission. You'll have your opportunity to step forward to the podium, give us your name, your address, and offer up any comments or suggestions you may have for the commission. Starting off, we'll begin with our old business. We have a review and approval of our June 8th minutes. The commission members, you've received those minutes. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, changes? Seeing none, we'll move. Those are approved. The next is Philip, is a view of city council actions since our last meeting in June.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, since our last meeting in June, city council did meet and approve the alternative design proposal that you all recommended regarding Rutherford Electric Membership Corporation. That was concerning the landscaping and screening of the proposed fencing that they had for security measures and whatnot. So that was approved at the last city council meeting.
Any questions concerning that? I've been by there and that is going to be quite a large facility. They've already started clearing. I think the Eagle Motel is already being...
Yes.
In the process of being demolished. It's going to be quite something.
It's going to be glorious.
This next item is for appearances. Again, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and address the commission dealing with the planning or land use issue, please feel free to come forward. If not, we have one new item on our business that we'll be discussing. Seeing none, we will move forward. Under new business, we have a consideration of a proposal by Morganton Lodging Associates for an alternative design approval, which will be related to the development of a new hotel facility. Philip, would you walk us through that, please?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I think you should see in a moment the map. This is the location of the facility. You can see it's at the intersection of North Green Street with Fleming Place. Bouchelle Street runs, and if I can get my cursor to... Let me see. You'll bear with me just a moment. So Bouchelle Street is in this area, and then East Catawba Street over here. So this is formerly the property that was, that contained, there were two historic structures, one of them being the Perkins House. And you'll have to forgive me, I think there were two, but I don't recall.
This particular property was the Conley House.
Conley House, okay. And so what is being, this is the location map. What we have here is the zoning map showing that it is zoned central business district. And then the future land use map, and showing also central business district. I know that's hard to see. Very difficult to see on this. It doesn't show the contrast, but... So what we are looking at is really, in three areas, the applicants are proposing that we have, or that we be considered, or that we consider alternative design. And I'll kind of run through those underneath your section of points to consider. But what, basically, I guess to describe the project, what they're proposing is an alternative design that will allow a hotel to be built on the project site. And it's, and they're proposing a way that would, that would fit within the character of the surrounding area. And you'll see how that, how that fits in just a moment, how it fits within our regulations, but then also how further it fits within kind of the setting that it's in, and why they're seeking certain alternative design approvals. As you know, we, in the alternative design approval, planning commission makes a recommendation and council approves proposals that are due to unique site situations and/or situations of unique design. And so that is what we're, it's kind of a combination of both here, and that's what we're looking at for approval. This is a, also a project, I would note, that has been the product of extensive discussions and exchange of information between the developers and their engineers and architects and staff. And so what you have is a collaboration of sorts to meet, to meet code. So under points to consider section, and that's kind of what I've already gone over, is the 2.2.7, which is alternative design. And so what, the first area that they are looking at, a proposal for alternative design, is in the percentage of required primary facade material. And you see on, on your screen and on your report that section 4878, materials in color, and we'll address these one at a time and then in tandem. But subsection A1 states that you have to have a minimum percentage of 75% on the primary and secondary facades, and that they shall be clad in architectural quality, individually set, naturally colored brick, granite, limestone, marble, similar slab, or block stone, and those are allowed on the primary surfaces. Okay? And that has to be according to the code, a minimum of 75%. Secondary materials, and those are enumerated here, the one that I would point out to you as the one that is being proposed, is stucco or ephes. And so what we, if you move on to the second point of my report, so I took this by the facade, or by the street elevation, and on the Green Street side, you have what they're calling, their primary material is 65.6%, and then their ephes brick, which is a, which is a stenciled stucco that is, that would look exactly like, has the same relief and shows the mortar and the brick material. So it looks like a brick, but it's just comprised, or made of stucco. And that is comprised of 15.1%. And then you have hardy panel, or vertical siding. You know, I skipped on the, I skipped that elevation. It's 65.6% on the Green Street elevation, 11.9% ephes brick on the Green Street elevation, and then 18.1% on the hardy panel or vertical siding. And then there, and the reason why you see hardy plank lap siding is because that is proposed on the, on the rear elevation of the, of the facility. And on the south side, or the Fleming Place elevation, is 65.1% thin brick and 15.1% ephes, and then 19.8% of the vertical hardy, hardy panel vertical siding. So that is, that is the one area, or the two areas that we're looking at, and that will, and what that looks like is here. This, on this side is the vertical hardy panel, and this is at the actual intersection of Fleming and North Green. This side is, this more gray looking side is the proposed ephes brick. And then if we switch to the Fleming Place elevation, this is reflective of the percentages that I just mentioned in that area. Are there any questions on that portion of it? If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask. Okay, so the next section that, and then this is a, this is a rendering of kind of a street view of how that would look from the intersection, and we'll get into that a bit more in a moment. Okay, so the next section that we're looking at is storefront design. And where, and sections, subsections A and B address how the building is to be, where it is to be in relationship to the sidewalk, or the property line of the property, or the, of the site. And what it states is that you have to have a majority, or greater than 50%, is to be immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. And not only that, but that you, that you can have no more than, under B, you can have no more than 20% of the storefront can be recessed more than eight feet from the sidewalk. Okay? And that, and so as you can see on their proposed site plan, that is not the case on either street. And they range from, at a minimum, or a minimum of five feet from the back of the sidewalk up to 20 feet, depending on the part of the building that you're looking at. And then the third section that we're looking for, that they're looking for in proposed alternative design, is in the depth of the linte. And you have an illustration of what the linte is. Our regulation says that from the surface of the building to the edge of the linte, you should be three inches. And the proposal is that it would be one inch. And I will let the, I think the architect is here to describe that, and, but I have, I have stated in there that basically this is based on the type of brick that is being used, and how that would be constructed is that it would, if they were to go out three inches, that they would need metal bracing that you would be able to see from the street. And so that is the proposal, is that because of that type of construction, it would be recessed to have one inch of relief essentially from the building wall to the edge of the And then, just as information, I have... Let me go back. As information, they, they are proposing in the, on the interior lot side, which is the, let me back up here. So in, on this side, which will be facing the adjacent property, we would call the interior lot side. And then on the parking lot side, or the rear facade side, our ordinance states that it has to be the same material, but there are no percentages that, that are required. So they are, these figures show that they are using the same material, and it actually gives a calculation of the percentages as well. Any questions so far? We feel like as staff, that, and I'll just kind of give our recommendation, that this is a site located in an area of the, of the central business district. That is, if I can back up for just a moment and let me get to the zoning. So as you can tell, this is at the, at the edge of our central business district. And these areas around, in this area, north of Catawba Street, north and east of Bouchelle Street, those are all residential areas. Also, on the southwest side of Green Street is residential. And so we feel like that because of this adjacency to residential areas, as well as a, on the other side, kind of if you go back and look at the, going, traveling into downtown, you see the Fonda Flora side, where the Fonda Flora Brewery is, and the bicycle shop and all of that, you have a harder urban edge as you move that way. In other words, you, you have buildings that are right up next to the sidewalk. And, and so we feel like that this is a, a unique opportunity to provide a transition from that, that harder urban edge to a suburban development. But then it also allows that, if you look at the, it allows a hotel with a certain amount of intensity to it to kind of fit in. In other words, if it was pulled straight up to the street, then we feel like that would be, the intensity factor would be such that it would be too intense, and it wouldn't provide kind of that softening effect and transition to when you get to the residential I think this allows, or we think this allows a sense of place to continue while moving to a more relaxed feel of surrounding neighborhoods. The proposed site plan is meritorious and therefore merited works towards a goal of providing attractive entrances, as is stated in the Mission 2030 Plan. Because one of the, one of the conditions is that, of the alternative design, is that it has to be in compliance with the Mission 2030 Plan. And the alternative design percentages of the building facade materials total just over 10% from the minimums and maximums allowed on the primary and secondary street sides of the building. And there is, as I stated earlier, no regulation on the rear and interior lot size, other than they need to be of the same material. And so therefore, we feel like that the proposal is in compliance with the zoning code. It accomplishes the standard of meeting the intent of the code.
Very well. Any questions for Philip? Can I ask one? The five to 20 feet, is there a way that you could point out?
I can.
Where that may occur?
Oops, not too far. Okay, so let me do it a couple of, well, this, I think this will be more meaningful to see it here. So along this, this portion of the building is, is where, where you would see a five-foot distance. So what, what you have, this is, this line where this brick knee wall starts is the property line, or would be the property line. So you, five feet back to this portion, it steps back along this portion of the building, and I'm not sure of that distance, it's, it's probably around eight to 10 feet. And then along this portion of the building is 20 feet from the property line. And then along this portion of the building is 20 feet from the property line.
So the, what appears to be like a plaza area in that drawing, if you could keep that up for a second?
Right here.
Yeah. What would be the dimensions roughly for that, that area? As far as from...
I'm going to say that it is about, so you got about five feet. From this area, at the top of the stairs back, it's probably about 15 feet by, I'm going to say, about 40 feet. I think they can, he's got, the architects that are in, in the audience could probably verify that, but just kind of eyeballing it, I think that's what it is.
Okay. Is there any latitude in the site plan to even set that back further, if you wanted to achieve at least a minimum consistency of 20 feet? Now, what I'm thinking about is streetscape plantings, just to tone the building down, perhaps, and make that transition from a urban to a, to basically the suburban area. Just a thought.
I mean, I think that's certainly something that could be, that could be considered and would be considered under alternative design as far as the zoning and approval process. I think that probably is a good question for the applicants, because they're going to know how that, how that building fits on their site and how it relates to the rest of their development.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments?
I was wondering about the access for parking. It seems the entrance to the hotel will actually be on the backside. And it looks like that street there is real narrow, the one where the excess is, and there's 85 parking spots back there for 85 rooms. Reception area and all is on the back of the hotel, so you would park, get your luggage in and so forth, and be received to check in. I was wondering, where do you propose most of the traffic is going to come from? Is it going to come down North Sterling, or is it going to come from behind?
So there are two accesses on, on the proposed site plan. One is, if you're, if you're coming down North Sterling, is it Green, Green Street? And then you turn onto Fleming?
Mm-hmm.
So there's an access off of Fleming, there's also another access off of Bouchelle.
That would be more like an exit going out, probably.
Could be more like an exit, yes, sir.
Well, that would increase the traffic flow from both those narrow streets, is that correct?
To whatever degree they would have, they would have coming in, I mean, I mean, certainly would increase it. I don't know. I guess with hotel, with hotel business, you're going to have traffic coming in and out at various times, so we wouldn't treat it similarly to a, you know, place of employment or something like that, where you have a lot of folks coming in at the same time. But I think you would have, you definitely would have more traffic. Hopefully, you would have more traffic, because that would mean the rooms are full.
They're normal. It says they're normal. Occupancy rate is 69.7%, so... 69.9, actually. That's the chain itself, Fairfield.
Did you get your question answered?
Yes, sir. Sure did.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none, I will open this portion of our agenda open for public comment. If you would like to speak for the requested design changes or against, please feel free to step forward, or if you would like to educate the commission more about the proposed plan, please feel free to do that.
Thank you. My name is David Bennett. I'm one of the co-developers, as well as a local representative for this project, along with myself and representatives from the Architectural Group, RBA Group from Charlotte. We're here to discuss more about this project and hopefully educate you more on the process of where, where we are right now.
Can we also get your home address, please?
Sure. 217 Riverside Drive.
Got you. Thank you.
So I'm going to go forward and just sort of lay out where we are right now of this project, sort of the history of how we, how it came to be and where we are, and then the gentleman from RBA Group will go through the specific design details which we've discussed previously by Mr. Luckadoo. Okay. Mr. Luckadoo's already mentioned the location, but just to go over that again, one thing is, is it is in the CBD, which is Central Business District. As far as that development, though, when you look at this map, you can really see there is a, this, this lot is a division between the commercial sector of downtown Morganton and then transitioning into a much more green and residential area of the city. So we've been very cognizant of that in the process of development. Economic highlights. So direct investment in this project will be $11 million over the next 24 months. As far as that investment, the investor pool for this project has already been opened, received, and closed, so that is completed. And the financing has already been approved as well. This will be 50,000 square feet of construction, and we're looking to create 30 ongoing jobs from the project and an increase in the tax base. Indirect will be an additional 95 to 100 guests per night in happening downtown Morganton. This also opens up the ability for us to have conferences and additional events which may not come to Morganton before due to the lack of housing or hospitality. Also, an appreciation of surrounding neighborhood property values, and we're hoping more infill in the area, which is part of the goal of the, of the 2030 initiative. So financing for the project, the project has been approved by Live Oak Bank, which is a commercial lender. They are the second largest SBA lender in the United States behind Bank of America. And they lend in specific verticals. So what that means is they have specific targets which they go for as far as different types of projects, veterinary hospitals, wineries, farm projects, agricultural projects, and hospitality is one of their biggest. And so they're one of the largest lenders in the U.S. for this type of project. We were able to receive approval for this project in, in late December from them, which is a good timing, because right after that, really, the market for hospitality lending is very hot right now, so it's, we were in at a very good time as far as a window to achieve that financing. And the financing is contingent upon the project being developed with a, within a specific cost per key. And what this means is, is that given hospitality or hotel development, you, depending on what the brand is, there's a specific range you shoot for as far as what it's going to cost you to build that project per key or per room. And so they're just, these products on a very much national level have a very strict window as far as where those need to comply as far as cost. So as far as the actual brand for the, for the project is Marriott. We were actually received our letter of franchise approval a little over a month ago on that, which is a very big deal, and we'll go over why. So as far as Marriott goes, they recently merged with Starwoods, and in doing so, they've created the largest hotel brand in the world. 30, 30 brands, over 6,000 hotels in 120 countries, over 100 million loyalty rewards members, one out of every 15 rooms in the world is a Marriott. And so what this means for us is that not only is the business traveler who comes to Morganton, who is loyal to a brand, they're going to find the hotel that likely they want to stay at, but it'll also draw additional travelers to the area who are looking for that Marriott flag. I'm a business traveler myself, and, you know, when you're loyal to a brand, you typically stay with that person, and you seek them out in the different, different places you're visiting, because you want to have the rewards points, and, and also you have things such as amenities that are not available to the regular guest. And so with, with this granting of the Marriott franchise for us, this is, this is a very big deal for us as far as the project. One of the co-developers is actually a Marriott preferred developer out of Pittsburgh. He's developed over 30 properties for Marriott in his career, the latest of which being a courtyard Marriott just outside Ballpark in Pittsburgh. So having him on the project has helped us land the Marriott flag, which is just one additional thing to ensure the, the success of this project. So with Marriott, what they do is they pick, basically, they look at your location, they look at the demographics and the economics, and they, they give you what they want to see as far as the flag, or the specific brand of the flag. So for this, they have picked Fairfield Inn and Suites. There are 850 hotels worldwide with 344 in the pipeline, and this is Marriott's fastest growing brand. The average occupancy rate is 70% per night with an ADR, or average daily rate of $110, which they felt fit with this marketplace. Now, that might go up in the weekends, it might go down during the week, but in general, that's sort of where the, the beating point is for, for the brand. Productive and smart guest rooms is a really big part of their latest generation of development. And so for hotels, they go through different generations, typically every seven to 15 years, they're going to change things out. They'll go through a whole iteration where they sort of update rooms, sort of do some soft changes and very hard changes depending on, on that cycle. And so right now, we're in the, the generation 4.5, and the focus is really on, on two aspects. So one, as far as productive and smart guest rooms, is really aimed for the business traveler in the sense where, when you're traveling, the last thing you want to worry about is how, how your room is, or where you're staying. So comfortable beds, very intuitive workspaces for, for getting your work done while you're on the road, and making the project process easy for them to get in and out. Fairfield Inn Suites also offers additional amenities to enhance customer experience, and this is aimed at, yes, the business traveler, but also for your, your tourist or weekend traveler as well. So things such as an enhanced fitness center, onsite pool, and also different amenities depending on where you are or what city you're in. So there'll be Fairfield Inn Suites will have bike chairs in front of them in very urban areas, for example, but it's really trying to be as, as friendly as possible to, to visitors. This is very key for us here, is flexible design to meet varying, and varying site and market requirements. Depending on the hotel, hotel brand you go with, you're given a starting point, which is called the prototype. And so that prototype is basically what they expect that hotel to look like. Some brands are very specific in the sense where this is our prototype, and there's no deviation from, from that prototype. In our case here, we were looking to go away from that. So in the photo you see here, this is the, the current generation Fairfield Inn and Suites prototype. You've probably seen them before in different cities. It's unfortunately not keeping with what we were looking for, for downtown Morganton. It's more of a rectangular box, center loaded with your main entrance slash pull-up in the front, or parking, you know, parking in the front. And also, the building was 77% ephes with more of a contemporary or transitional design effect on facades. And so we've actually transitioned that and worked with Marriott and their team to go in a different direction to make a project that's more in keeping with downtown. Now, I'm going to turn this over now to the group from RBA, or RBA Group, excuse me, who can walk through the specifics of their, of their design proposals, and we can go from there.
Any, any questions? I do have one. I noticed that the breakfast area in your site plan, and adjacent, behind it, is what a bar area?
Correct.
Will there be food service available there?
That is a work in process, actually, as far as what we would do for, it would be more of a afternoon to evening facility. And so in theory, there would be some, some level of food service, just we've not really gotten to the point of where that will be, as far as how in-depth that food service will be. There will not be a full, a full-service restaurant on the property, though.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Christopher Allred. I'm the architect on the project, um, Charlotte, North Carolina, uh, one twenty-two West Bland Street. One of the things that, uh, we've, we've really appreciated is working with Mr. Luckadoo. I know that my colleague and I have, have had some extensive conversations with him, uh, kind of working through this project. Uh, I think with, that it's, it's gotten to a good place. Um, it kind of really fits within, um, what we kind of see as, as the, uh, the Morganton that, uh, visitors might expect or, or, um, a, a resident would also expect. One of the things that, that Mr. Luckadoo has, uh, has already commented on, um, one of the things that was important to us was, was as this project is, um, really, um, the, the edge of the Central Business District and that, that buffer between the residential areas and, uh, the downtown district, understanding that, that a hotel has, has a lot of mass, um, it has a lot of size. And that can be daunting to some, some residential neighborhoods when it, when it suddenly shows up. So what we're, what our intentions were, um, generally, um, that has caused some of the, 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 um, the, the request for, for deviation, um, was to, was to ease that transition from the Central Business District into the residential neighborhood, increasing some of the setbacks. It's more of a, a residential feel where you have your typical, you know, your setback far off with a front yard as opposed to your business district, which is, you know, you want your storefront right on this, the back of the sidewalk. So what we've, what we've really wanted to do is, is, is kind of address that, that easing between, but between the two neighborhoods. We believe, uh, that, uh, this, this, um, the design is, we've, we've kind of placed it, placing the, the plaza on the corner, kind of, you know, hinting to the, the relationship with the, with the property and, and the, and the street frontage and talking to about, uh, talking to with it, being closer to what you might typically see in a central business, business district. And as you kind of move them a closer to the residential neighborhood, stepping that back, easing the transition as well as, um, introducing more of the typical neighborhood residential landscaping, you know, some more shrubberies. So you're not kind of right on that hard edge behind the sidewalk.
Is there, did you change these?
I got you. So, whoops. So as you can see, we've kind of, as you leave the Central Business District, you kind of get into that more of that landscaped area, the zone with the, with what you would typically see in, in the lawn. The, uh, the, the question regarding materials, um, as, as kind of has already been discussed, uh, one of the things that, that we are, um, working against with, 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 with the franchise, the Marriott, um, this is a, as you can tell from previous slides, this is a pretty good departure from what they expect for a prototypical Fairfield Inn and Suites. Um, we believe it obviously fits more within, uh, the aesthetic of Morganton, um, than the prototype. But, um, one of the things that is also a challenge is, um, the budgetary aspects of a project this size. The, the franchises generally relate their, um, uh, their, uh, construction costs and franchise cost to, um, the cost that it, it, it costs to build the project. When you're talking, uh, that large number of, that's a large scale of EFS, um, there's, there's a significant bump in, um, budgetary aspects when you go to that much, uh, true masonry. What we, what we've, what we've intended to do and, 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 and plan to do would be, um, as, as has been discussed, is, is to utilize the materials, um, that is, uh, we were talking about the thin brick, um, as well as the EFS brick, maintaining that, the, the, the idea and the relationship of the design and, and what's within the, uh, the, the, the design standards as well as what is typical of Morganton, but also kind of easing that transition, um, both financially as well as materially. Um, we did bring some, uh, samples of the, um, the EFS brick. I know when we, uh, we spoke with Mr. Luckadoo that, uh, there were some questions regarding that type of material and what that is. My colleague Wiley is, is showing two samples that we had made up specifically for this project. It's, uh, it, it, it is a true EFS. It's, 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 uh, as, as the Mr. Luckadoo said, it is a stencil. But it is prepared in such a way that it's not, not as flat as normal EFS. So it really kind of, we've had a lot of success with it transitioning from, uh, thin brick or true masonry laid brick as well as, um, doing a, 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 a full architecture with, with this type of brick. Uh, one of the things that, um, it does have an advantage with is obviously financially with cost. But then, uh, again, it's, um, when you, when you are working it with, excuse me, uh, traditional, traditional laid masonry, um, it's, it's the, it's, it's work specifically in the field to match specifically. So it's, it's, um, you know, while we have some samples of the brick we intend to use, and this is a different color brick, um, it would be worked within the field, uh, to kind of make sure that those flow seamlessly. Uh, one of the things we are kind of wanting to do in the, in the, in the architecture as well is when we do use this application, it would be, um, uh, clearly a different brick. So we're not kind of, you're not going to look at the building and see a spot that is EFS and then a spot that's brick and kind of feel, uh, like there's something funny going on. So it's kind of that, uh, um, the idea that, um, you know, it's, it's part of the, it's part of the architecture, but it's kind of a, a, a different means to get to the same end result. The, the, the last portion, um, is the, uh, the specifically was, um, was a question was the, uh, the standard regarding the, the lentil extension. One of the things that, um, we, when we started studying this, this, this effort, that, um, there, it becomes a little bit more of a, a, a trickier situation to, to provide, uh, that much of a lentil extension. Even in, even in true full-bed masonry, um, that is, uh, that is roughly four inches wide, to have a brick that's sticking out three inches, it becomes a little bit of a, a trickier situation structurally. So then there's more of a steel lentil that kind of is pronounced at the, um, at the base of any brick lentil if, if only, only a, a half an inch or more is being supported by the masonry behind it. So it's, it's a little bit of a, um, a, 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 a different situation that, um, we feel like, um, the, um, what we understand and what we, we desire and what we wish would be that, uh, the windows are, feel more of a punched opening and they have depth to them as opposed to the lentil specifically sticking out. Um, and that would be one of the things that we would obviously would do with, with every type of brick, whether it's full bed, thin, thin brick, or the EFS brick, would maintain the look of a thick masonry wall with the windows recessed back and then the, the pronounced lentil above that. Instead of, instead of the, the, the lentil sticking out from the face of the brick one inch, it would be the overall depth from the face of the window to the face of the lentil would be more in that three-inch range. So it's, 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 it's not something that we, we, we can't do. It's just, it's, there's, you know, if you're looking up at the building, you're not seeing the bottom of brick. You're seeing the bottom of a steel lentil because it's, it's being cantilevered out to hold that three-inch, um, cantilever or three-inch header cantilever. So it, that's, that's one of the things that we, we desired to kind of go back to a one inch and provide a more true, what, what we consider a more traditional, uh, lentil design where it's, it's, it's self-supporting or, um, uh, uh, appears self-supporting as opposed to being a steel lentil that happens to have brick on top of it. And one, to answer one of the questions, I'm, I apologize, I don't have hard numbers on the plaza size. But, uh, Ms., Mr. Luckadoo was, was correct. It's in the roughly the, the twenty-foot to forty-foot wide range on the front, on the Green Street, and then there is some additional that wraps around, pardon me. There is some, some additional that wraps around that side street. That would be.
If I could inter- interject, what I was dancing around when I was asking for that information we're, we're discussing going back from a, uh, zero setback on the, on the sidewalk, which I, I'd like to go further back. Is, is that even in the realm of possibilities? Or would you feel even more comfortable with, with, uh, greater setbacks?
Well, uh, what, what we're, uh, really, um, what we really want to do is, is kind of work that transition from the Central Business District at the corner into the retail zone. Uh, the next slide is, is kind of from that ret- that residential area, looking back towards the Central Business District. So you, you can kind of see where we start to transition the landscaping and the length of the width of where the building's at from the back of sidewalk, from a more residential, uh, feeling, uh, distance to that, that, that corner that's holding the best Central Business District, where you've got that plaza and the building and the activity that's going on at the bar area that's happening right on that corner to really activate that and become part of the, the, the CBD. And then as you come back towards this residential, you start getting the, the streetscape and the landscaping that starts to appear to blend that edge into the residential edge.
So you, so you feel comfortable with that, that twenty foot? I mean, you wouldn't want to go deeper.
Uh, I, I, I think that, that, um, it is appropriate. One of the things that, that would, that would definitely, um, I think would, would counteract that is the, the general height of the building. You start to get the, the, the height of a four-story building that far away from the street, then you start to get, it's, it looks a little bit over suburban than the feeling I think that this, this site wants to have as a, as a, as a piece in a, in, in a, in a lot or a landscape as opposed to a building that addresses the street as a commercial building, whether it's, uh, hotel retail, a residential or not. So I think that, I think that's about, it, it feels about the right, about, about the right distance.
Okay. Good deal. Any other questions? I, I just want to make the comment. I, uh, have been involved in this property since the early to mid nineties. Actually, I actually own the property. And, uh, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to appreciate the views if you were to get into the second or third or even fourth floor of this proposed structure, but your views to the north and the northwest are going to be tremendous views at sunset. And I wondered if, uh, in the planning process, uh, structurally, you could prepare or even envision something on the rooftop? Because I'm assuming you're mechanicals. I didn't see any kind of mechanicals plans. But some, some sort of a roof, rooftop patio or even an enclosed or covered, uh, restaurant to get really out there would be quite a addition.
Absolutely. Yeah, we actually do have that in the plans. Uh, it's, it's in the engineering phase just to see the, the viability. Uh, but the plan would be to do a, a terrace on, 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 on the rooftop, which would be roughly five hundred and eighty square feet? Sorry, seven hundred and fifty square feet, um, which is, there's a reason for that. Basically, if you, when you go larger, you need to have separate elevators, separate fire escapes. It basically becomes a fifth floor at that point. But to stay at that, so you'd have actually access to that and the ability to then really take advantage of those views.
I think it would make a strong
Sure.
addition to your project if you could give that some, strong consideration now for future.
It is incredible where it's, you know, having
It boils down to dollars.
About one and two-story buildings, but really when you get up there and you, you appreciate the views that, that Morganton has to offer is, is quite amazing.
Real fine. Thank you.
Some deviation within, or within the guest rooms to kind of open the guest rooms to have, not kind of your standard guest room where it looks straight out and has that one window. The ones on the corner, we've incorporated extra windows into there. So you really kind of get a view two different ways kind of out of the room. And so.
Sweet. I did see also a patio, uh, for Fleming and Green Street. Is that a terrace?
That's correct. So the idea there, if I'm just to go back one slide, the idea there, which this is another, uh, deviation from prototype for Marriott, uh, that is allowing us to have this basically bar space and the restaurant. And if you want, I'll actually go back to the floor plan. So this is the ground floor, floor plan. As you'll see, the idea there is to have that outdoor terrace that wraps around it. That's why there was that setback from the road on the corner. So when you see the, uh, that setback where the, um, on, on the green and, and Fleming Place, uh, corner is, the idea was to really activate the corner, is the term, uh, architectally speaking. So that way, when you, you're driving through there, you're really setting up a streetscape that is, that is impressive and that really kind of makes the address become a property of itself. So, um, we, we feel that that's, that's been the way forward. RBA has been fantastic to work with as far as this goes, to really create that sense of place for the property. But correct, that would be, you know, access from that bar area and also there's a walk-up area there from the street.
Uh, last question. Uh, I noticed there's also a pool. Is that an open-air pool or covered?
That's an open-air pool. Uh, that's one of the Marriott requirements for the property.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone else in the audience would like to, uh, come forth and comment? How about the Main Street Guru? All right. See you, Noah. We will. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you, would you please come up for, so we could? We're, we're broadcasting and, uh, we'd like to see your beautiful face.
Well, uh, I'm Diane Claus, and we have just, uh, we, we're coming back to Morganton. We're over here on Jefferson.
Give us your address, too, please.
At one oh four Jefferson Street.
Okay.
We love that property. And, uh, since we've been back and my grandchildren have come to visit, they run all over there, climb the trees. It's just a really, I mean, I know the views are probably, will be spectacular from the third and fourth floor, but the property from Kataba to Fleming Street is gorgeous. It's absolutely gorgeous. And so we're wondering what's going to happen to that piece along Kataba. I know there's some residents towards the end, down towards Bouchelle, but what about that section of property there? I mean, is it going to be a park? Is it, you know, what's going to happen to that? Does any, is it owned by the city? I mean, what, what about that property?
What we can relay is that the property that, uh, is being proposed for this, um, inn, the Fairfield Inn Suites is, is, I'm not sure if you folks are the owners or would be leasing the property, but all of the property with the exception of Morganton and Hardwoods is owned by the same owner.
Okay.
So.
So that whole, from Fleming to Kataba.
Block with the exception of, uh, Morganton, uh, Hardwoods of Morganton is under the control of one owner or, or a group, if you will.
Well, it, it is a beautiful piece of property. I'm sure the, the views are spectacular, too. But some of us with our feet on the ground appreciate what's going on down at the street level. At the, the hotel looks beautiful. And I do like, there's a, a lawn in the front. All of that looks wonderful. But I just worry about what's going to happen to that lot right beside, so.
What I could suggest or offer, stay tuned.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Okay. We will close it to, uh, the public, bring it back here to the commission. Do we have any further discussion? If not, I would certainly entertain a, a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
And I'll second.
And a second. And that motion would be to incorporate the, uh, amended changes, these three different amended changes to the design. And I'll put it up for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that will go to the City Council.
Their August seventh.
Their August seventh meeting. Again, thank you for being here and sharing the information with us. Moving forward, is there anything else that, uh, we need to bring up for discussion? Philip, do you have anything? Okay. Hearing no other items, that will move that we adjourn the meeting.